Good evening, welcome to this conditional use hearing concerning CU 2022-0004, former Kmart building, 1094 Haynes Road. So. You have any ground rules for this that you want to lay out?
Sure. This is a conditional use hearing on the town center overlay, similar to zoning hearing board request for special exceptions. Meaning that we have a stenographer here to give testimony. Applicant through the first and their application. Board can ask questions and then. Bring in comments, questions from the audience. We just asked that, since there is a stenographer, that one person's speech at a time. Slowly and clearly so she can take all of the testimony. With that in mind, Paul, do you have witnesses that we need to speak to?
Yes, I think, and good evening, everyone. Paul Minnick on behalf of the applicant. Appreciate your time here this evening. We know you have regular meeting with a full agenda at seven. So I'm making trouble for Paul to be too fast with the court reporter, but we're gonna try to keep to half an hour. We would anticipate principally one witness, Joe Stein, but we might have Mr. Stein, Mike Jeffers from Kinsley, Brian Wick and Isner from Wellspan, sworn in case the board would have any questions.
Okay, gentlemen, stand. You swear or affirm the testimony you have to give, will be truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Thank you.
If I could interrupt, in case we need staff testimony.
Are we going to need still deputy and Randall as community development committee? Sure. Well, why don't we just. Randall John, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you may give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, I do, thank you.
I'm sorry, sir, I didn't catch your last name.
Oh, Minnick, am I? So delighted to be involved with this project. Those of us who lived in York County our whole life, I remember this site as the Kmart back when that was the heyday of retail here in York County. It's a property that has had vacant for some time, that the application reflects. We have a reuse opportunity here, which we think is terrific for the township. We've gone through your conditional use process, lead up process. Who are obviously in the overlay district here. Your staff has been terrific to work with. We had some meetings with them. We have the onsite visits required. And I think what we're presenting to you now represents the culmination of those efforts for a plan that we think is fully compliant with the ordinance. We're dealing with a site, the address is 1094 Haynes Road. It's 6.36 acres. It's in a mixed use district, town center overlay, and I mentioned the most recent use to simply. The building size is eighty-three thousand feet hundred fifty-three square feet. At present, ninety-five percent of the entire surface area is impervious, and as everybody's aware, the building is oriented towards East Road. The building, if we have your permission to move forward, would be an adaptive reuse. And it would have really two components. So one of them is a fifty-eight thousand square foot medical laboratory. This is a back office laboratory for Wellspan. So patients would not be coming there. That laboratory service is rendered rather, this would be where lab tests are processed or handled. And we would anticipate that that would bring approximately a hundred and sixty jobs, and these are good, high-paying, productive jobs to that site. The balance of the square footage, approximately twenty-two thousand square feet, would be for clinical medical offices. So we would be bringing direct Wellspan medical providers to the community, both in that building. These are both uses that are permitted in your mixed use district, and I think we all understand that the changes in the way retail has worked out. But this just is not an appropriate retail site or use any longer, but it's still a great, prominent location in the township for a use like this. Again, it's oriented towards Haynes Road. We don't need any special zoning relief beyond what we're coming here for tonight with respect to conditional use. The planning commission heard this and unanimously recommended granting the conditional use and modifications. We do have a couple of modifications for you to consider. These are not an evasion of your rules. These are entirely based on the fact that this is adaptive reuse, because you know examples. Your town center kind of calls for more limited setbacks, and we take the building, the old Kmart, as we find it. So I think you'll find that the modifications are consistent over the idea that we're doing adaptive reuse. So in terms of walking through as quickly as I can, rather lengthy condition standards, I go ahead and ask Joe from one up. And Joe, for record, could you state your full name and your employer?
Joe Stein, civil project manager from Warehouse.
That's correct. And Joe, how long have you been in the plan development?
Approximately eighteen years.
And could you just briefly give the board your educational background and explain any credentials?
Sure. I graduated from Wilkes University in 2004 with a degree in earth and environmental sciences. Upon graduation, I was employed locally through a civil engineering firm. Have been at several over the years for the eighteen year total, specializing in subdivisions, land developments, environmental permitting, highway occupancy permits, anything generally related to and with. Site development, including these zoning type of issues.
And then we're gonna put into the record, I'm looking at exhibit one through six. What was your role in preparing those and in preparing the application as a whole?
I along with staff at Warehouse, prepared the plan, reviewed the ordinance, and coordinated with the applicant and developer to prepare the application. We oversaw compliance of the plan with ordinance in every aspect possible and produced the request for modifications as necessary.
And then, just to hit it up, Ron, in your professional opinion, based on your education, eighteen years of experience, you're involved in designing this plan, for the exception of the modifications, you believe that this application is fully compliant with provisions of strength, protection, and ownership of the property?
Yes, I do.
And then, we have at everybody's place setting our exhibit one through six. And Mr. Stein, maybe just at the outset, you could briefly describe those. We can do this in a couple of ways. We do have blowups here. Mr. Hahn arranged for us to have it on the screen for those board members participating remotely. But whatever is easiest, maybe just tell us, going one through six, what each of those is.
Briefly, exhibit one is sheet two of our master plan. This is documenting the existing conditions of the site. So it's an existing site survey, shows the property, something property with the building and parking with the surrounding features such as Haynes Road and Washington Drive, Washington Road. Exhibit two is a rendering that our office prepared. It is a posed condition that has just been colorized for graphical purposes. No changes to the building are shown here, but you can see the increase in landscaping and reconfiguration of the parking along with landscape buffers on the sides of the property.
And then, if we can turn to exhibit three.
Exhibit three is our layout sketch. There you go. It just shows some of the dimensional improvements that are on the property, such as your parking spaces, parking islands, plaza, and just some other general features for informational purposes.
Thank you. And then exhibit four?
Exhibit four is an architectural rendering of the new building facade. The important note on this sheet is the box on the right center that indicates compliance with the section that specifies the amount of transparent or translucent storefronts that is required, so that information is documented in that box there.
And then if we could move to the next exhibit.
Exhibit five is our landscape plan, showing the posed landscaping at the redeveloped site. We have added shade trees where possible within the parking lot where required, and buffers along the parking on the north and north of the parking in the building as well.
And finally, exhibit six, can you tell us what that is?
Exhibit six is a blowup detailed plan view of the public plaza that is located along Washington Road.
And then, let's focus now a little bit on the conditional use standard. We have some general standards that begin under section 325-37 of the ordinance. A five, is it correct that medical offices, clinics, or medical laboratories are permitted uses as a property?
Yes.
And then, the ordinance talks under section 325-194 about permitted considerations, things that the board should consider purposes behind this. Do you believe that the plan is submitted as consistent with the purposes or intended purposes of the ordinance, particularly compliant with the comprehensive plan?
Yes, I do.
And that's the 2006 comprehensive plan?
That's correct.
Is the proposed development, to your knowledge, in any way inconsistent with the comprehensive plan?
No.
And do you believe this use is consistent with the purpose and goals of the town center overlay district, such as enhancement of the long-term strength of the township or retail market by jobs, improvement of the appearance of the commercial, or an encouragement of mixed uses?
Yes, I do.
And then, were you familiar with the statistic I cited, that we expect a hundred and sixty or better good paying jobs associated with district development?
Yes, that is correct.
The next applicable section is compatibility, and that's section 325-194B2. Do you believe that proposed uses in the best interest of the properties in the general area and the community at large?
Yes, I do.
Pretty aware of any negative implications associated with this?
Not at all, no.
And would potential use be complementary or beneficial to restaurants, stores, and other retail uses in the vicinity as a result of bringing not only customers of Wellspan, but predominantly employees to that site?
Yes, I do.
The next applicable section is suitability, 325-194B3. Do you believe that suitability requirements are met in terms of this proposed?
Yes, I do.
Serviceability is section 325-194B4. Is there sanitary sewer, stormwater, water, fire, police, and other public facilities available to service the site?
Yes, there is.
And then accessibility, section 325-194B5. Is there adequate ingress, egress, interior circulation with pedestrians and vehicles, off-street parking?
Yes, there is.
And then, is this project aided by the very recent roadway?
Yes, it is.
We then move to approval requirements under section 325-194D. Are we in compliance with the applicable zoning?
Yes.
To the extent that there's state licensing involved in medical or laboratory facilities?
Yes.
Or the public services, traffic appropriately accommodated in a safe and efficient manner?
Yes, they are.
And is there any injury to any neighboring property owners or the character of the neighborhood as a result of this?
No, there is not.
Move to the design standards, which take us to section 325-200. We already touched on this, but are we consistent with town center plan and comprehensive plan?
Yes, we are.
Pedestrian access, can you just tell us whether that is met and maybe how that is?
That is met by an existing sidewalk network that connects Washington Road and Haynes Road. There's a signalized, signaled, signalized intersection with pedestrian access located at Haynes Road and Washington Road. So there is ample facilities for pedestrians to come and go to and from the site.
And then, working through section 325-200, will the refuse areas be in the rear of the site?
Yes, they will.
Will there be screening relative to service and loading areas and where on the building?
Yes, so screening or service and loading areas will be located on the rear of the building, which is the west face, which borders Interstate 83 northbound on ramp, and that will be the dumpsters that are located back there are screened, and the other items are appropriately screened or otherwise placed.
And then, the rooftop mechanical, other than a modification that we'll talk about, will those be appropriately sealed as required by the ordinance?
Yes, they will.
We ensure that any signage is consistent with the ordinance?
Yes, that is correct.
Exterior lighting, will that be fine with all requirements under section 325-200?
Yes, and a photometrics plan has been submitted to ensure compliance.
Then we have design standards for improvements to and reuse of existing buildings under section 325-100H. We have a public entrance oriented towards the street.
Yes.
We have twenty-five percent transparent translucent materials on each story.
Yes, we need any.
The parking facilities to the rear and side, is that something where we're also seeking modification requests?
That is, modification is sought for that requirement due to the existing conditions.
And then pedestrian pathways and landscaping property edges are those required?
Yes, with the exception of the southern property line, which borders the adjacent property, which is shared parking.
And then, is the requirement landscape islands with trees met?
Yes.
And then, is the facade articulation consistent with the standards of the passage?
Yes.
Or is the circulation or requirements under section 325-201-2 met?
Yes, they are.
Or the street sidewalk standards of section 325-23 met?
Yes, and in fact, the existing sidewalk is being improved, existing sidewalk is being removed as it is deficient in size, so we are going from four foot to five foot.
And then, there's a public plaza requirement. Can you explain, is that being met and how that's being met?
Yes, all dimensional and aesthetic requirements that are outlined in the ordinance are provided for in the plaza. Is located within the public access easements, is connected to a public sidewalk. Facilities are provided such as benches, bike racks, and a sculpture is enclosed in that area as well as landscape.
And then, we have some streetscape elements under section 325-205, are those requirements?
Yes, along Washington Road, we have included street trees and benches as required by the ordinance.
And then, we have an off-street parking requirement under section 325-206, has that been?
Yes, it has.
And then, the ordinance talks about the application procedure and site visits, working collaboratively with township say-up on site visit. Have you strictly complied with all of those requirements?
Yes, we have.
Let's now move to modifications. We have several modifications here. Would it be fair to say that the modifications largely derive from the reuse issue?
Yes, they do.
And is adaptive reuse one of the objectives of the township's ordinance?
Yes, it is.
And do you believe in this case modifications serve with the purpose and goals of the town center overlay district?
I do.
Do you believe that the modifications result in any adverse impact to any properties or future inhabitants?
No, they do not.
Do the modifications result in any increased development densities?
No, they do not.
Do the modifications, in your professional opinion, represent the minimum relief necessary to ensure?
Yes.
And then, just to walk through these in specific order, section 325-199F2, front yard maximum fifty feet. Can you explain why we're seeking?
The building is located as it has for the past several decades, several hundred feet from the roadway line, street line of Haynes Road.
Section 325-199H, impervious coverage area to be eighty-five percent. Can you explain the justification for the modification?
The existing impervious cover for the site, which has existed as such for several decades, is approximately ninety-six percent.
And will the impervious coverage area actually be slightly reduced as a result of those improvements?
Yes, with the addition of some green space in the parking lot and the public plaza, there will be a minor reduction in impervious cover.
Our next modification request, section 325-200D1 involves rooftop and a complete screening. Can you explain the justification for our request for relief from that as it relates to visibility?
Sure. Screening will be provided on the northeast and south sides of the building. The west side, which is adjacent to the ID freedom bound off-ramp, we are seeking relief from screening on that side.
Our next modification, section 325-200H3, parking on the side and rear of the building. Suffice it to say, is that because of the setback of the previous structure there?
That's correct.
Next modification request, section 325-200H5, landscaping along edges of the property. Can you explain our modification request and the justification for it?
Yes, here we are requesting relief from the southern, which falls in front of the building, the southern portion of the parking lot that is adjacent to Salvation Army site, their shared parking, seamless impervious, and we request relief from that requirement in that location.
And then, finally, last modification, section 325-206A1, landscaping around surface parking lots. Can you explain the basis or justification for that modification request?
Similar to the recent statement just prior.
And then, were you in attendance at the township planning commission meeting on May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two?
Yes, I was.
And is the plan before the board, the application essentially identical to what was considered by the township plan?
Yes, aside from addressing minor comments prepared by the townships engineer.
And did the plan commission, in fact, in your presence, say grant approval of this condition?
Yes, it is.
Do you believe then that under the circumstances, the request for modifications would be more appropriate?
I do.
I have no other questions for Mr. Stein, but to the extent that any board member or community member solicitor would have any questions, we'd sort of talk with them.
First question I have is, I thought you said 325-200.H5 right before we talked about H3. I don't see that on my list here. Are there five, are there five waiver and modifications or are there six?
Six.
You have that?
I do not have that.
Excuse me, gentlemen, I did have five on here. I believe they originally did have six, and I thought that they excluded one of them along the way. I may be incorrect. I do have five on the summary that you do have.
Do you repeat, 325-200H5?
Sure, that is landscaping along edges of property.
And again, the reasoning for is that a modification to avoid doing it where the parking lot's touch, you're gonna be doing it around the rest of the park?
That's correct.
Okay, I'm good, I'm good.
You made a comment that there is a minor reduction in impervious, do you quantify?
Yes, we go from an existing impervious coverage of approximately ninety-six percent down one percent to about ninety-five percent. That is due to the addition of the landscape islands that we've added with the shade trees and shrubbery, as well as the addition of the public plaza.
That material, well, let me ask the question this way. Is there a reason why not increase the amount of impervious coverage, given that you exceed the parking lot requirements?
We believe that the part, the amount of parking is appropriate to meet the requirements of the forties and the needs of the future tenant.
And we did take a hard look at that in terms of the impervious coverage. And we're happy we're reducing it a little bit. We know it's not directly compliant with the ordinance, but the concern is with a hundred and sixty employees, shift changes, and then also the medical usage fairly critical, that we make sure there's enough parking.
And as a matter of correction, I did misspeak, and I do apologize. Existing lot coverage is ninety-five percent, we are reducing to ninety-four percent.
And could you also go into a little more detail on, I think it was the screening of the HBAC mechanical on the Interstate 83 side?
Yes, reasoning. Just because it is not a local road, it is more of the interstate and felt that it would be more appropriate to screen from the north east and the south sides, whereas on the west side, your focus is not necessarily towards the building, but focus on getting access to the interstate.
That road is above freeway, isn't it?
There are portions, yes, certainly as you start and then as you approach heading north, kind of traverse from above the building to ground level with the building.
Okay.
So even if there were screening, you would probably see over it as you initially enter onto the northbound ramp. And then, as you continue to enter onto Interstate 83. Building that you're.
Looking at how high.
Hopefully, you're looking over your.
I.
Oh, so there is.
You're gonna see it.
So, until you get to road days. See, yeah, so I guess I'm wondering what hardship is that you wouldn't put the screening on site? We're taking a look at road view and it's pretty odd, yes.
It would be similar to what you experienced now, however, we can say that the back of the building will be cleaned up from a lot of the miscellaneous items that were back there currently, so the modern HVAC units on the, and then other structures on top of the building for air handling and whatnot. If there is a strong concern by the board, we could have further discussion.
Yeah, I just spoke with Mr. Jeffers from Kinsley, and we don't even have to have discussions or seats fit to acquire that, we would be willing to withdraw that modification request. But we think in general, you know, this is, it's a tough site, and we're pretty proud of how we try to fit things in. But certainly, if the board has concerns about the visual impact, we just thought it was less of a visual impact, given the interstate there, but if that really is a concern, I think of the modification request we have in terms of list of priorities, that would be the one that we would most readily concede and try to accommodate to wishes.
Gentlemen on the Zoom call. Comments, questions?
I would, I one hundred percent agree with Mr. Worster's question about impervious and the chairman's question about that screening. I think both of those are questionable modifications, in my opinion.
And just to add, you can see that screening on the southbound ramps as well.
My only question would be, how many parking spaces are there on this current plan?
Yes, that's correct. So the total required parking spaces is three hundred and thirty-six, total provided is three hundred and fifty-five. Your ordinance requires four spaces per thousand square feet, and that's how we determine it, three hundred and thirty-six total. Three hundred and fifty-five is a, I believe, a reduction from what is out there currently. The reconfiguration of the parking spaces is compliant with your ordinance, whereas currently it is a myriad of aisle widths and angled parking, and it's kind of a free-for-all with no physical obstruction such as curved islands to route traffic appropriately. So we do believe that the reconfigured parking lot is an improvement. There is properties adjacent to the parking lot, such as the former bank along Haynes Road. And should that be redeveloped in the future, there may be a need for shared parking, and so we would like to keep the number of parking spaces that we do have presented on the plan for that purpose.
Yeah, and we did look at it. We do, the goal is also to redevelop the out parcel, the M field, M and T banks, and from our perspective, it is critically important to have the parking available. So we did certainly wrestle with that and come to you having kind of hammered that out as best we could. In terms of priority, that one really is very important to us in terms of being able to preserve the necessary parking. And I think it also ties into the adaptive, you know, if we were moving from seventy or eighty percent up to ninety-four, we'd be a little bit different. Taking the site, we're making a slight improvement to it, but again, of its circumstances, we kind of measured this and tried to figure out every way we can make it work, and that's just one where we think that modification makes sense.
How many parking spots are there in the bank? But currently? How many parking spots are there within the bank, uh, currently?
Three forty-five.
Do you see that being a different use than the bank? Uh, used that's there now?
Oh, the bank has, uh, operations have ceased, the building is vacant, and so redevelopment will probably not, uh, be a bank. It may be a complimentary use to the medical facility that's being proposed. Within confines of the ordinance, the building may be expanded and some of that parking may be eliminated as part of such. And therefore, we would seek to maybe utilize, uh, shared parking with the property on the form of K word.
Yeah, the sense, and it really is a marquee site, that out parcel in town, you know, but Kinsley wants to be very patient and thoughtful about what they bring in there. And the concern is if we lose parking, we lose flexibility, we lose the ability to bring in the best potential tenant. And a lot of times we go into ZM hearing boards and township saying, hey, allow us less parking. Here we are ironically.
Asking for more parking.
Yeah, as.
Yep. And, and we were trying to have some, some foresight to that, so that we wouldn't have to come back in the future and say. Can we want to take out this green space that we put in for, in order to obtain more parking in the future, should the need arise?
And we think we could deal with it potentially, depending upon what that use is. Because again, we have the same conditional use township overlay, um, so we'll be back. I don't mean that as a threat. You know, we'll have to come back because of this again in that piece. If we would have flexibility later, same developer, we can look at that, but we feel like we need to have maximum flexibility with respect to parking to really make sure that we can hit a run on that further we can go. So that was kind of it in a nutshell from, uh, our presentation, if I could just respectfully move into the record applicants, exhibits mark one through six. And then to the extent that the board would have any questions, we do have Mr. Wake Advisor here, well-span, we do have Mr. Jeffers, uh, from Kinsley. But we don't want to kind of feed the dead horse here, and I'm already two minutes over, uh, my allotted time. Well, we certainly welcome any questions, but we think it's a great project. Uh, I would also note when I was here on the Eastern Bullhorn Haynes Road project, you gentlemen were kind enough. To accelerate us to the decision of the first item or second item at your regular township meeting. I would not, uh, be so presumptuous as to tell you what to order things, but I did want to suggest that we would be receptive. To, uh, agenda acceleration, if you're so inclined, uh, when you speak in more, so it possibly. Uh, but unless the board has any other questions, I would just note, the staff's been terrific to work with. But we appreciate the cooperation, collaboration. It's been first-class, it's been professional, it's been helpful, and we think we've got a great project for you.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Okay, at this point, I'd like to open it up to the floor if there's anybody here that would like to, uh, speak to this conditional use. Um. Reuse of the, um, the K word on, um, at ten ninety-four Haynes Road. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Anybody in attendance on Zoom? You can click the raise hand button if you would like to address the board. Right, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you.